We'll recall the meeting order for October 4th. And Commissioner Frank Drosa chairs out of town today. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'll go approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary, citizens to be heard, I plead, you're here for something that's already on the agenda?
Yes, and I'm sure where it's from.
Yes, good rule. So, that's who we'll call you, thank you. Next item is approval of payment of bills and vouchers.
I'll go approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Gary, next item is approval of recommendation from PRSN LSU's committee for positions to change from exempt to non-exempt. Gary, or Human Resources person.
I get to go first this time.
Lucky.
Alright, well, thanks for having me and taking a look at this overtime thing that came out, oh, about a year and a half ago, I guess it was. And if you saw the handout that I gave you in your packet, it kind of lays out what this is all about. For those of you who don't know, back in 2014, President Obama signed a presidential memo directing the Department of Labor to look at the overtime rules for exempt and non-exempt employees. And so, in July of 2015, the DOL put out a proposed overtime regulations which then gave companies in the private and public sectors to comment on those rules. And then, in May of this year, DOL, Department of Labor, announced the final ruling on exempt, non-exempt definitions and the overtime changes. This is to go into effect on December 1st of this year. And so, this has been a big news in the HR channels, a lot of people haven't heard of it or seen of it, there's been a little bit of news coverage on it, but within the HR channels, this has been pretty big to try to determine what impact this new law is going to have. And so, the biggest thing, we really never had to worry too much about it because the old wages were, to be non-exempt, was $23,660 per year or $11.38 per hour. Well, our grade one, step one, always was above that, and so, our exempt employee, or our non-exempt employees, basically are from our grade 11 down, okay? So, when this new rule came out, which hasn't been changed since 2004, so it, I think everybody was in agreement that they had to adjust the dollar amounts because it hadn't been looked at and adjusted since 2004. But, I think the great angst of it was that they more than doubled it and made it effective this year. So, a lot of companies are scrambling to try to figure out the impact of this new law. So now, the hourly wage is 2283 an hour, up from 1138, and the yearly wage is 47,476, Well, now, if you take a look at our grid, which, I don't know if you have a handout, but this is what it looks like now, every thing that is in red, right here, now falls below that non-exempt status. And what ends up happening is, you have to become exempt, which means you're a salaried employee, you're not eligible for overtime, what ends up happening is that now all of those positions are non, going to be non-exempt because they don't meet the wage requirement. So, I did an analysis of the wages and the positions that we are looking at, and it came up to about 16 positions that are going to be impacted by this new law, which means they don't meet the minimum wage requirement. Some of those probably should have been non-exempt before, I'm not sure when they were categorized as exempt or non-exempt, but they've met the duties test and they were considered exempt from before. The impact to Minnesota alone is about 79,000 workers and about estimated 4.2 million workers across the United States will end up probably going from exempt to non-exempt status. What this means is then, we're going to, they start incurring overtime charges, whereas before it was just, you know, salary and you could take time off for work over, whatever. And in that regard, now, the overtime costs are going to be a little bit more. The biggest position that this impacts is going to be our social workers. Our social workers are exempt employees right now, they do not qualify for overtime, and they do work a lot of extra hours, and so, the impact is going to be felt mostly by them. The other positions that we have are juvenile counselors, there's going to be some impact there, and then there's some onesies and twosies that probably won't be a huge impact for overtime because they don't work a lot of, you know, over the 40 hours a week anyway. So, what I have done so far is, we've met with the managers, I've talked to them once in a manager's meeting, and I've also met with the PIC committee on three different occasions to kind of go over this and how this is going to impact. The PIC recommendation is, well, let me back up one step, is, social workers are kind of a unique crew because there was a survey done about two years ago where 60% of the counties that were surveyed have their social workers as non-exempt, meaning overtime eligible, and about 40%, a little less than 40%, have them as exempt like we have. So, there's not really a standard to say all social workers are exempt or non-exempt. So, when I brought this to the PIC committee, it was discussed and recommended that the positions, the 16 positions that are going to be affected, be moved to non-exempt because they didn't meet the qualifications for exempt status based on the wage, and to move the social workers as well to a non-exempt status. So, that's kind of where we are right now, this is the first time I've brought this to the board. There is, it is supposed to be in effect, go into effect December 1st. I can say that there's a lot of pushback on it right now, 21 states have done a lawsuit against this ruling, and there has been some, even Democrats, even Colin Peterson has submitted legislation to step it in instead of making it all, you know, doubling it all at one time, so that it would be stepped in over three years. The other thing on this regulation is that every three years, it will be re-looked at and the wages adjusted accordingly. For our case, our grid would still have the social workers under that threshold this year and next year, but then, based on the COLAs, they would then be above the grid for most likely 2018. So, that's kind of where we're at right now, and I would open it up for discussion.
So, is the PIC committee's recommendation that anybody that falls below the threshold would fall into the non-exempt category?
Right.
So, in three years' time, if the exempt, if these social workers, for example, came out of that, would it automatically then put them, based on what the recommendation, would it automatically put them back to exempt?
I don't know if it, I wouldn't say it would automatically put them back to exempt. It would be a decision that we would have to make at that time. I think the decision that we make here would stick through whatever the wage would be because of, the wage is going to continue to fluctuate. And that's a lot of the discussion that's going on, is why are you basing this on, just on wage? Because if you look at social workers or some of the other, like, are grades 16, 15, you know, you could have steps 1 through 5 falling under the wage requirement, but steps 6 through 12 being above it. So, what are you supposed to do with people that are coming in, they're exempt or non-exempt at steps 1 and 2, and you have people doing the exact same job that may be at step 12 that is, you know, could be categorized as an exempt worker? And if you have it that way, you could technically have people that were newly hired getting overtime hours and making more money than a person that's been here, you know, three, four, five years, depending on where it falls.
So, Dan did a great job on this, we spent a lot of time discussing this issue, and actually, I think that it's going to be beneficial to the county is what we decided in making these changes, but, so, I don't know that I ever asked, so, is it automa, so, it's up to the county whether we classify somebody as exempt or non-exempt, so, it isn't just based on the, you know, it has to be if it doesn't meet the pay threshold, but otherwise, we can still classify an employee as a non-exempt even if they're making, you know, above that money.
If it's above the wage, the recommended wage, then what we would do is look at what's called a duty test.
Right.
They have the administrative, professional, executive, and computer duties test, where then, if it meets the wage, let's say somebody's at grade 18 or 19, and it meets the wage requirement, but it doesn't meet the duties test, then it would go back to being non-exempt as well.
Right, okay.
This has all been through PIC committee?
Right.
Yeah, we've had three years.
Three conversations on that. Yes. I'll move to approve the recommendation.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Just one more question. So, there was, in my days being involved with companies with employees, there was also a component of whether or not you were exempt or non-exempt, or in the private world, it's salaried or hourly.
Right.
You know, there was also the issue of, one of the criteria to be exempt or salaried would be if you were in a managerial or supervisory position. So, it wasn't, I never even realized there was a threshold for dollars, but it was more so about what you just talked about a second ago, based on duties.
Right.
And so, this is something new to me, I guess, that I didn't realize that the, that's probably why I wasn't in HR either, but.
And that's the thing, is, we never had to worry about the wage threshold before. Well, maybe we did many, many years ago, but we never have since I've been here because we've always had, our grades 1 through 10 have always been non-exempt, and they've always met that wage threshold. Now that they've more than doubled the wage threshold, now it does impact our grid and it does impact the people. Now, there is a stipulation in the law that says that county employee, or public entities, counties, cities, are allowed to give comp time as well, at time and a half. So, you have the option of paying overtime or comp time, whereas I don't think the business world has that option, anything over 40 hours would be deemed as overtime and paid out.
So, was there any discussion on that amongst the PIC committee about a preference that the county would want, you know, with our budgets the way they are and being tight, is there, was there a proposal that we recommend the comp time versus the overtime pay?
There was some discussion on that, and I think part of the issue was, let's take a social worker, and let's say that they worked 40 hours a week, or 45 hours a week. And those social workers have a lot of work to do and they're constantly trying to catch up, and they're, from what Rhonda's saying, there's always something to do. And what would end up happening is then, they may take some time off the following week, whereas if we go and pay them for those five hours of overtime that week, then they come back and they do another 40 hours the following week as well. So, it's probably beneficial for positions that are very busy and have a lot of work to do, to just pay out the overtime and have them here working, rather than, you probably all know that once you take a day off, you're probably two days behind.
But that also, you can look at that from the other standpoint too, and it also creates the burnout issue that we hear time and time again, that reason a lot of our employees leave is they're burned out.
Yeah.
You know, so there's a double-edged sword there.
Yeah, absolutely. It's a, yeah, it's a difficult issue, but, you know, in terms of managing, you know, your department, you know, knowing when people are going to, I mean, that's one of the problems, we have so many people taking time off, it's hard to manage that, and so, you know, if the overtime is managed properly, which is up to the department director and their supervisors, it should be a better system and more cost-effective, and that was the, that was the end of all our discussions that we came to, that this should benefit us rather than.
They will have to manage the overtime, you know, something that they may not have been.
I'm going to support the motion here, but I would like to request that, you know, over the next year or two, that we monitor this and to just see what kind of dollar impact it's had to our budget, I'd like to know that.
Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Thanks, sir.
Next item, Dave Overbaugh, approval to sell out long motor gator shop. You've got your right hand man here.
Absolutely. Good morning. Good morning. We've got two items on the agenda today, first item being approval to sell one of our outlying motor gator shops, we actually have two of them to sell, one in Rolag and one in Holly. The Holly one's not quite ready for sale yet, but the Rolag one is, and we just thought it would be good to get this one moving. We'd like to probably do some advertising, we're not going to, at this point, look at expending any costs other than just some marketing, we probably put an ad in the forum, work with some of the other social media sites, and then put up a real nice sign and do some word of mouth things out in the area. I think it's a pretty marketable area with the steam crushers.
This will be through our highway committee. Board's wishes?
Well, I would move that we authorize Dave to put that shop up for sale.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Do you have a set price that you'll be advertising it for? We're not putting up for bids, correct?
Well, that is kind of what I like to do, actually, I think I would probably take sealed bids on that, I guess that's what we were thinking, Eric and I were discussing it this morning a little bit, and we haven't got all our ducks in a row on it, we'd like to get permission to move forward on it, but I was kind of thinking we would take sealed bids, I don't know, Jenny, does that sound consistent with?
Yes.
So, can, do we have the ability to have a threshold where we can, where we want a minimum?
Yes.
I think we need to protect ourselves a little bit, we could put this out there on a wrong day or something and end up having just, I don't want to sell that thing for a buck.
Yeah, if you remember, Kevin, we did have kind of that real late appraisal on that about a year ago or so, and I think it was in the mid 40s or 50s or something, it wasn't near as high as I was hoping that that little shop would be, but, so somewhere in there, I think we'd have some sort of a minimum where, you know, we do have language on our equipment that we sell that says, you know, we can reject all bids, I think we would put some sort of a language in our ad for that.
My other question, is there, do you anticipate any contamination or cleanup that you will need to have in order to have a sale?
Yeah, not in Rolag, and that one has been cleared, we did hire Braun Intertek to do phase one studies on both sites, and this one has been cleared, the Holly one does require a phase two, there is one underground, it's like a heating fuel tank, so, we're in the process of taking care of that in Holly, and as soon as that, and I'm not really anticipating a huge deal out there, and the reason I say that is Kirk from Solid Waste and I gave the PCA a call a few months ago, and they did have it in their records that there was a tank there that was removed with no issues, so, the PCA didn't have any red flags or anything when they called them, so, I'm not really anticipating a lot of things, I know, I think it's either today or tomorrow, our own staff is going to pump the tank down, and we'll have an idea what's in there, if there's a lot of water in there, obviously that's not a good sign because then it's taking water in, but I have a feeling it's going to have a few hundred gallons of diesel fuel in it, and at that time, we'll get Braun hired, we'll get the tank removed, we'll test the soil around the tank, and hopefully with the phase two, we should get clearance in our next 30 to 60 days, that's kind of our hope right now.
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Carry on, second one, Dave.
Item number two is a geo-tech proposal from Braun Intertek, and this would be to do all the testing services for the utility and the parking lot contract that we opened with Key Contracting a few weeks ago. There's specifications in the bid for the trench that we're doing for the water and sewer line, there should be testing, or will be testing required on the aggregate parking lot, on the concrete for the curb and gutter, and if there's any sidewalk or driveway concrete, there's also some asphalt testing that needs to be done, and we feel this is a pretty good proposal, Braun's done a nice job for us on some of the other projects on the campus, and the estimated cost at this time is just under $10,000, and I guess I think it's the way to go, we definitely need somebody to do some testing for us, and we feel this would be a good option.
Board's wishes?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry on. Kirk isn't here yet?
Yes, he is. Very well.
I can't believe, it's not the first time.
That'll happen to you too.
No, that's the first time I didn't overlook, you know, so.
Selection of a consultant for new transfer station in problem materials building.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell and I have been spending quite a bit of quality time together here, we've been looking at a lot of different issues.
I don't want to be saying that.
At any rate, we've, one of the things that we looked at is, we're slightly in a consultant, as you remember, two years ago, the legislature awarded Clay County $600,000 grant to do final design and engineering for our transfer station, our problem material facility. We interviewed, initially, we interviewed five firms to help us do that, and from that five firms, we selected three firms to give us a budget, some budget information. The three firms that were selected were Burns McDonald, HDR, and ACOM, and all the firms basically had, were from the Twin Cities, but they had local connections as well. After asking additional questions, Steve Moore and myself, Steve Moore is the Public Affairs Director for the City of Morehead, the committee, which consisted of Commissioner Campbell, Commissioner Wayland, city councilperson Jim Heaney, and Chuck Hendrickson were part of the committee, and after we considered the updated budget information, we decided we would go to award the contract with Burns McDonald. The primary reason why we decided to go with Burns McDonald is it just seemed like they had a better understanding of the project and what we had hoped to achieve out there. The initial estimate that they had was higher than the other two, but they gave us twice the numbers of drawings that we had asked for, and they also had a better understanding about the home side utilities. So, with that, I'm requesting that we all approve the selection of the consultant.
Did you have, would you like to?
Sure.
Come on. Just introduce yourself and.
My name is Ken DeM.
Have a chair here, please.
My name is Ken DeM.
Could you spell your last name, Ken?
D E M M O N S. And I am with HDR Engineering, and we did have a great process, and just a question I maybe like to offer for suggestive discussions, is that, once the process was completed through the proposal and the interviews, and they did ask us for scope and a fee, and the delta in that difference, the 250,000-plus difference, I just, it seems a little excessive to me, I know they do have more drawings, cost per sheet is more, but, you know, we have gone back and looked at our cost as well, and feel comfortable with the scope provided. I don't know what scope they provided, and it sounds like it could have been additional scope as well, so that's really what I was curious on exploring a little further.
Kirk?
Mr. Chairman.
Ken?
Mr. Chairman, I think, again, I think that all the consulting firms, the initial information we received was all very, very good, I mean, I think any of the three firms could have done the job, however, the information we received from Burns McDonald was far above any of the information we received from anybody else. And the primary reason why we felt, the committee felt that would be useful was that it would minimize the number of change orders that we could have as we moved forward, and also minimize even one of the contractor conflict that could possibly happen, so, again, I feel pretty, I feel pretty confident that we ended up with the right consultant on this.
Ken, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
For having a long drawing for you.
No, I'm down.
Well, anyway, thank you for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Very much.
Yeah, I want to comment on this too, you know, it's, you know, he brings up the dollar difference, and it's somewhat significant, but we also, you know, saw the, that there was more than likely more upfront costs in Burns and Mack's numbers and less rear-end costs as opposed to these other ones, so, and, you know, we didn't take that lightly because we're also, half of this money is coming from the state of Minnesota, and so we want to make sure that everything we did was well.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I would move that we go with the recommendation of Burns and Mack from our advisory committee.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. The second item that I had for you, again, resulted in much quality time between Commissioner Wayland and Commissioner Campbell and myself, I think my bruises and welts are only beginning to heal up now. One of the things that we did, we purchased and installed the scales of landfill about a year ago, and we've been weighing our trash as it's come across the scale for the past year, and we are asking today to move from volume-based pricing to weight-based pricing. And essentially, as we weighed these loads, the loads weigh anywhere from $42 to $45 a ton, and what we're asking for is to establish the tipping fee, establish it, and it goes into effect January 1 of next year, and the tipping fee that we're asking to establish is $45 a ton. And we have, I've included a sheet for your information, and essentially, that's the sheet that we'll be going, that we'll be using as we establish these tipping fees next year. The one thing that I should point out, and it's pretty important, obviously, to some of the communities in the eastern part of the county, is the tipping fee, or the weighting, the weighing that we've done for the past year, most of the loads from City of Morehead fall within the range of $42 to $45 a ton, so there should not be much impact, I would think, to the City of Morehead. However, the equipment that the Fox sanitation primary, primarily, is the main hauler east, eastern part of the county, and they use regular packer trucks, and the packing capacity that they've gotten has been significantly higher than what they've been charged. They have been, based on the volume-based pricing, have been charged about $26 a ton, whereas the real cost should be about $45 a ton. whereas the real cost should be about $45 a ton. So the tipping fees for the, or the garbage bill is basically for the folks in the eastern part of the county should receive a increase. I should point out, I've already heard from City of Barnesville that they've gotten a note that said their garbage price is going to go up 22%, which seems a little bit excessive to me. A family of four typically generates a ton of garbage on an annual basis, so it seems like 22% seems a little high. But I've already talked to all the communities in Clay County and once you all establish this, I'll go out and talk to all the communities again. And we did bring this to the last SLAC meeting and we talked about that and we're going to try and talk to the townships as well. So with that, I'm sure you have a couple of questions.
Yeah, I, I don't really have questions more so than I have, I do, my first, I do have one question and that, and I thought of this after the fact, if we're going to go to a weight-based, so all that's going to be as it comes into the landfill, what happens if our scale goes down?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, that's a very good, very good question.
Well, we have to have a plan.
Yeah, and we don't have one right now, so that's a very good question.
Okay, so.
Something to work on.
Yeah, but we.
No, that's a very good question, well.
I mean, I, alls I have to do is look at Prairie Lakes to see how things can go wrong and, and, you know, it can go wrong.
Are there portable scales available that you can have?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Wayland, are portable scales, I mean, that is possibly an option.
There's a lot of options.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we will have some options, but I hadn't really thought about that. That's a good point, Commissioner.
And then, you know, so I think, you know, we're talking about really two fees here. We're talking about the tipping fee go on, we're going from weight-based to, or volume to weight and that being $45, but according to this chart of fees, there are additional fees that are not related to weight. They're based on type of material.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, type of material plus weight.
Right, Mr. Chairman, that's true.
So, but, but, but we have them at, at a per count. For example, we start talking about truck rims and all those, it's, that's by the each.
Mr. Chairman, that's exactly right. And, and the, for the materials such as tires and things like that, rims, it is on a per item basis and essentially, it's the same cost that it costs the county to properly handle it, so.
My, my whole purpose in saying this though is we, not only do we need to set the rate for the weight, but we need to set the rate, the other rates that are not.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner, that's exactly right.
Okay.
I appreciate that you brought up the Barnesville community as a representative from that area. I have heard concerns from additional residents. My question is, wasn't there a fee increase over the past six months from that company? I believe that I've heard from constituents that there's already been an increase.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's my understanding, I really don't know for sure, but I understood that they raised, and I'm talking about Fox sanitation, they raised their fee about 11% previously and it hasn't been that long ago. So, yeah, that's what I understood.
So my question maybe is not answerable, but then, then this rate change that we're talking about, they probably increased those rates in forecasting for what our action would be, correct?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I honestly don't know. I mean, I can't speculate.
My other question then goes to the $45 a ton for households, correct? Is that across the board, apartments and households, everyone is taxed the same amount?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, we, there's, there's two, there's, basically there's three sources of funding for our solid waste program. There's a square grant that we received from the state, there's the tipping fees that we received from the material that comes across the scale and then the third is a service fee. And this year, we're not doing anything with the service fee. The service fee is going to stay the same, so the apartments are going to be, you know, what they have been for the last, you know, 10 years and that's not going to change. What I'd like to see happen and, you know, we've talked about this with the committee is I'd like to have some kind of haul or collective fee. I could not get that done this year, so that'd be something that I'll be working on for next year, but there'll be no change as far as the service fee. The only thing we're talking about here is the tipping fee.
Because it seems, just with my experience, that it would, it should be an across-the-board level taxation, whatever the household is.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I would agree. We may have a further discussion on that at some point in time. I would, I would definitely prefer with the on that.
All right, Board of the Board's wishes?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank, I mean, Commissioners Wayland and Campbell have been very, very helpful on this and, you know, I, I'm still relatively a newbie here and, you know, they, they helped me give me, give me some history and that was very helpful, so I thank them for that.
I'm able to approve the weight-based.
Oh, second, one final comment. As you can see, based on, on the scale here, we're talking about raising additional revenues of about a half a million dollars a year. Now, what you're going to see coming forward here in the future is a new capital plan for, similar to the Internal Service Fund for solid waste, which incorporates this and shows the need for this. The, the only concern that I have in this comes to the fact that, you know, we're setting these and then we're going to, we're going to hear after the fact from those that it impacts. And in some of these instances, I, I would have preferred where we, we get the word out and give them an opportunity to, to be heard, but I think just in the whole process, well, if they don't like it, they're going to come and, and visit us, so.
Jenny?
I'll, I'll just kind of piggyback off of what you said as well. I understand that we're going to hear on this, but I also have been at township association meetings where we've had department heads talking about the fact that we put so much money into putting a scale out there and it seems like it would be irresponsible government to spend that much money on such and then not use it. So I think that, that while the dollar amount has not been talked about significantly, I think the knowledge that there will be an increase is out there.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Three.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item was committee reports and we'll start with Kevin.
And, I had a few meetings last week. First one was highway tracking and we, as we saw today, we, you know, we talked about the Ro-Log and the Holly shops and the Ro-Log one, of course, we acted on that today. The demolition project that we talked, talked about a little bit today regarding the soil borings needed, but there was, there was also some potential change orders that were required because of the sewer and water lines do not align properly in that area. It's something that they did not realize upfront. I don't know to what extent that change order had any significance, but we talked about the 12th Avenue turnback agreeing with the City of Moorhead and there was, the Moorhead has agreed to that and what we've suggested would be that the method of payment, they were asking how we wanted to do that, whether it be over five years or whatever, and our proposal to them was that we would like to see that paid over the life of the bond on that project, so it would have a smaller annual impact to Dave's highway budget and it would certainly coincide with getting the money to the, the money to the city on time for them to make their payments to the bonds. The county road 95 construction project, we learned that there was over $200,000 in additional costs due to gravel quantities needed on the north three miles, so that brought that, if you remember correctly, though, that bid came in several hundred thousand dollars under engineer's estimate, but they, poor quantities or poor qualities required more gravel. And then, there was some discussion on the engineering project for the 2018 Glendon Urban Expansion Reconstruction and we learned that our costs will increase to about $100,000 on that, significantly more than what we had originally put in our high five-year plan. But we, in discussing it, we felt that based on other bids that we've had in our five-year plan, we should be able to cover that additional cost. Prairie Lakes Solid Waste, there was really, it was a decent meeting, there were no major alarms that went off this time. It seems like it's moving along, we're more in line with our revenues than we have been. We are looking at future fixes to maybe look at something different with the superheater, so that's being looked at. Then we had our solid waste meeting Thursday morning and we've acted on all of those issues other than the fact that I want to say thank you to Shannon and Julie for the good updates that they gave on the recycling and the household hazardous waste updates. And that's all I have.
Chief?
I also had Prairie Lakes Solid Waste and Kevin reported on that and then Sunday and yesterday, I had Minnesota Rural Counties Caucus Annual Meeting in Alex and, oh, we had general business and changing of the directors and that type of thing and then we had presentations by, well, Big Stone County has something they call the Minnesota Brain Gain and Minnesota Bump where they're trying to attract, you know, former or encourage people to move to their area because of the quality of life and that was an interesting presentation. And then we had, I liked the discussion on transportation issues and I'm sure that's going to be one of our priorities again for the 2017 legislative session. And we had a number of candidates from that area and legislate, legislators and we had a lot of discussion on healthcare costs and mental health issues and the way they're impacting our jails and the state and the rest of the issues we've got. And that ended up the way it usually does where they each blamed each other for nothing getting done, so that was pretty much the end result of that, so. That was it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week, I had the Lakes and Prairies meeting and we, it's a busy grant application time, so the Board approved a significant amount of grant applications. We received report backs from the Minnesota Conference and National Partnership conferences that staff members attended and we set a staff training day for the end of October. I also want to publicly thank, as a member of the Buffalo Red Watershed, not a member, but a committee-designated member, Bria Kobelia for her service on the watershed for the past seven years. She is stepping down, but she has been a significant member of that Board, a very active member of that Board and her knowledge has been outstanding, so I want to thank her for her service.
I had one meeting on Thursday, September 29th, Lakes and Prairies, and Jenny has already covered that. Aaron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things that we were working on, I know Jenny and I and Matt Cero, Mark Sloan and County Administrator Brian Burke, we got a data practices request last week or maybe the week before that requested a lot of our policies on data practices and so we've been working on that this past week. We had two, two people in our new hire orientation last week. We have a management team meeting coming up on Thursday. I am meeting with the Social Workers Union reps next week to discuss the overtime rule that we just talked about today, this morning. Of great importance is that open enrollment starts next week. We get in your package is next Tuesday. It does end on October 28th, so we appreciate everybody getting their stuff in on time. And met with the Corrections Union for their contract negotiations and Mike Ringle is going to be here October 18th to go over that, so that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Jenny?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I have one last thing. I just want to keep the board up to date. Brian and Lori and I have been having discussions regarding the additional bonds that are going to be needed for the correctional facility and the law enforcement center and we've called a meeting of the finance committee for, I believe it's the 25th of October, to review this. The reason being is, is, I think and we believe that there might be some real financial benefit in us going out and calling for those bonds early with the rates as they are right now and, and we've been in contact with our bond consultant and they have told us that typically January and February offer very good rates and so we want to make sure that we, we catch that the best that we can and even means that, that we pay an additional few months of interest that might really warrant to do that versus the long-term effect of, that even a quarter percent could have on a, you know, 40 or $50 million project, so. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on that and have a report back sometime in November.
Good, thank you, gentlemen. Colleen? Meeting adjourned.